Mark, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you, Jay.
Without you, you won't be able to see us, you'll be able to hear us. So if there's any questions, I'll try and pass it along, okay? You're just on my computer, not on the screen.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Mayor, we're going to proceed if you're all right. Both Kurt Detman from EEI and Mark Schuster on the line, we're having trouble with this screen, however. So I'm just going to turn that off and they can hear us. If you have questions, I'll just communicate them to them, okay? But I think we should be fine without them tonight. Let's turn that off. Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask your consideration of a motion to authorize the purchase of ten Motorola radios for the Police Department at a cost of $61,808.40 as budgeted in the fifth fiscal year 2022 budget. Chief Thompson is here to answer any questions. This is a requirement of Kane County. Maybe you'd like to explain that a little bit, Brian?
Back in September, October, Kane County, which is part of the county government, advised us that they were going to be switching over to Starcom, which is a cryptid frequency owned solely by Motorola. And that they were hoping that everybody would follow them onto the new frequency. The reason for it was because they came into several million dollars of CARES money during the COVID times. They were reporting to us of COVID addresses and they felt that it was a HIPAA violation. And they used that that money to create a new frequency. So unfortunately, we don't have any options. We have to go with them. We do have four radios from them now. And it's the clarity is very good. The range and I think it's going to work out well, however, it does come at a cost.
There are digital radios now instead of the analogs, so are you still having problems on it for high school?
Shouldn't.
Because I know you get that trouble when you got inside the building.
Well, you have credit for trade in the old ones or something.
I'm working on that.
Can you put it on the gov? How is that like?
Can you explain what the audio accessory that does bring your on point?
It's actually a remote microphone that attaches to the lapel. It puts a speaker closer to your ear because that will be our primary radio. Normally, our primary was the squad car and mobile radio. That's dead to us unless we want to talk to the fire department, which we still can on the portable, but we're not using it as much. So it's just an extension of the speaker and microphone.
Any other questions or comments?
I know it's all a few different technologies because knowing we've got a plan ahead a couple of years, how does this potentially generate a body cam?
It really won't. What we're doing now is completely different. What we're doing now is we're researching to buy a couple of the body cams for us now because we have to use them for search warrants. We're not required to use them on each office until 2023. However, we're going to get a couple. They will also work with our in-car radio video system. So we have been a lot of research, everything that will be cataloged, but these have nothing to do with them.
Cool. I didn't know if it was like long system.
Good question.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to authorize purchase.
One more, sorry. Just one more thing. It says here that the money is coming from the tow fund to purchase it.
Yes.
Does that mean that it's not coming out of our budget or it's comes as income that's coming in that we're using for that purpose?
So the tow fund is a restricted fund balance for the village. So it is in the budget, it just comes out of the amount that's restricted. So we will release that restriction to the extent it's using the money for this purpose.
The total had for was that a planned purchase or was just because it came up with COVID?
So.
It's been planned since the requirement before the budget, but since the Kane County placed that requirement on us. So yes, it's planned.
Any other questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the authorized purchase of ten Motorola portable radios for the Police Department at a cost of $61,808.40.
I'll make your motion.
Questions for comment?
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Porter?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Ms. Pauline? Where should we end with you?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next thing is we would ask your consideration of an ordinance authorizing the borrowing of funds for the purpose of financing a 2019 Freightliner truck and Schwartz A9 Street Sweeper. And Ms. Lyons will tell you a little bit about the financing. You have a summary in your packet of the loans that she considered.
So I reached out to four different financial institutions with respect to financing the street sweeper and the truck that it is mounted on. And so our bottom line is our recommendation is to go with Heartland Bank, who offered debt certificate, which is a general obligation bond, like an official bond issue versus the installment agreements that were offered by the three other financial institutions. The difference being this would be require a semi-annual interest payments and principal payment once a year. It does, in my analysis, I assumed that it will be level principal, which is one of our, you know, crazy complaints that sometimes it's $35,000 and the next year it's 180. That's that's not what my assumptions assume here in this. But bottom line is the interest rate is less despite having additional fees for attorney opinions and other documentation requirements. It's still less than the installment agreements offered.
Do we have any other questions?
What's the difference between the street sweeper and the one we just paid 250,000?
It's the plan to be financed. It's the same piece of equipment.
We've already approved in a previous meeting, but we'll spend on that. So how are we financing something we just paid?
You approved the, what do I want to say?
Let me, we've already purchased the sweeper. Now we're going to finance it. So we're asking your approval for this financing mechanism. This is not the first time we've done that. Typically, when we buy equipment, oftentimes we'll bring it in-house first and then finance it later.
We already paid for it.
Yes, and we will, the cash will be replenished back into the into the fund.
The fiscal budget for FY23, where is our budget estimated on a financing option for the street sweeper or a straight purchase of this?
FY22.
Is that what it worked on?
Yeah, we're in FY22. It was for the financing of the equipment, yes. Yep.
And we just, we just took delivery of it because we're in such a hurry to get it, paid for it, and now we're financing it after the fact. This is how it was budgeted.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion to create an ordinance authorizing the borrowings of funds for the purpose of financing a 2019 freight net truck named Sweeper.
Say it.
Questions for comments?
What's the ordinance number?
Twenty-one dash fifteen. Thank you.
My last question. Ms. Lyons, what was the total dollar amount that we approved on the actual purchase of the street sweeper when we brought it in? I know we're financing it now.
Two twenty-eight and change was the dollar amount. In fact, I think.
So the finance?
The resource bank did exactly 80% versus, you know, like the 80/20 that we requested. Usually we'll put 20% down and yeah, where the other ones are kind of rounded, if you will. So yeah, that 182 is 80%, but it was two twenty-eight and change.
All right, thank you.
First and the second, are there any other questions for comment? I have a whole lot of questions.
Mr. Evans?
Hi.
Ms. Paulus Jr.?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Porter?
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next thing is we would ask for a motion to approve a raffle for Coon Creek Days for four items valued at $250 each. That's right. Item D, a motion to approve a raffle for Coon Creek Days for four items valued at $250 each.
Mr. Pomazano is with us tonight. Is there anything you'd like to say about the raffle? Wouldn't be all helpful. Sounds so tight. Sales should be well. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve a raffle, the raffle for Coon Creek Days. Questions for comments?
Are you planning to wheelbarrow?
Wheelbarrow? It'll be assorted craft beers, mix of tech and so forth. It'll be all nicely salted and wrapped and.
I was more worried about the wheelbarrow.
What kind of size? It's going to be a pain to put it away every night, let's put it that way.
Wait, are we talking like a little tiny?
No, it'll be, it'll be, it's not going to be an industrial wheelbarrow, but it'll be concise.
She's going to commit. No.
Whatever it is, you're going to have to pull it off.
I don't think so.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Porter?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Ms. Paulus Jr.? Quick question, can I vote on if I serve on the committee as well?
There's no question, yes.
Present. Mr. Matt?
Actually.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Questions for? One present, one change.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending the village zoning regulations relating to off-street parking spaces in certain industrial zoning districts. This is something that this was a staff amendment. As a zoning administrator, a text amendment that I proposed to the Plan Commission, which heard this on the 24th of May and recommended approval. What this does is in our manufacturing districts, we have kind of an unusual requirement of a no parking in the front or side yards along the roads in our industrial areas. As you have in your packet, an agenda supplement from Josh, who did a survey among surrounding communities. We also checked with Safebuilt in their experience, and frankly, they had not experienced anybody that really had a similar setback requirement that we do. So what this will do is require a 15-foot setback from the front or side property line along any road and then allow parking in the front yard. This was requested by WR Meadows for the building, the old Pat Ag building that they bought next door to themselves. And this also will apply to the new project freight union up in the park. So we have two unusual variances that would have been required or requested had we not been able to approve this. So I think this is a good recommendation and Chairman of your Plan Commission is here as well if you'd like to ask him any questions.
Ms. Marat, do you have anything to add before we ask a question?
Not directly. Actually, we had a little bit of discussion prior to the meeting to clarify a minor point. I actually did review all of the, from these own flats in the entire village, just to kind of get my, that I did have. Technically, it's a matter of like creating a few.
I think the references over on Kaiser Avenue, we already have, a lot of those buildings were built before the 85 code was written, so they would become in compliance then.
One question. Well, maybe it's for you and Mr. Ed. I know we hear we're listing M1, M2, M3, should we also be listing OM in the office park?
That hasn't been requested and I don't think that that same restriction applies. So I would say at this point, no.
It doesn't apply to the OM?
I don't believe it does.
That is something I did consider as well, that they should be broad, the bread, you know, light the brush as it were. But I did want to review a lot of the issue at this moment.
Okay.
Can I ask where the 15 feet came from? Was that just like the, what we needed to get more compliant or would that kind of like be looking at other surrounding communities?
Based on Josh Ray's review of all of the neighboring communities, there was a range from, I think, 10 to 30, 10 to 30, or we kind of went with the heavy, depending on the middle.
And this all some of the requirements of WR Meadows as well.
Question, you're clarifying my mind on page two, what the, what we say, the purpose of jet, it should not be considered as a, any yards of side yard. Talking, not talking residential.
Trustee Mott, the reference to yards is kind of a general zoning term. So it applies to, there's not any grass, it's just pavement and curb, but it's just referred to as the front yard or the side yard or the rear yard.
Just manufacturer. It would only apply in something district exclusive.
But what I mean by that, the term side yard is often often referenced in the zoning code in a number of ways, but does not refer to somebody's lawn.
All right, are there any other questions? Thank you, Chairman Marat. Okay, with that, I will approve, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 21-19, amending the village zoning regulations relating to off-street parking spaces in certain industrial zoning districts. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Clark, can you please follow the order?
We've not took the entire ordinance, one letter.
It was eighteen.
Eighteen pages.
I apologize.
No.
Oh, they took it, did children write it down, right? Maybe I messed up.
They wrote down 28 pages.
Oh. That's okay. All right, let's go.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Porter?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Ms. Paulus Jr.?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda, we would ask consideration of an ordinance amending the regulations concerning water and sewer connections in the village and establishing new connection fees. You'll recall that we, the board approved this ordinance last week, or two weeks ago at the meeting, but there was some concerns about clarity. I think particularly trustee Mott brought this up and others as well. So this draft, this has been redrafted entirely. And you'll see now that the charts within the municipal code in your packet now lists very clearly studios, one bedroom, two bedroom, single family. And then we have the sized meters or lines as well. So there's no substantive change here. It's just a clarification about the question about condominiums. So just to refresh your memory, what this bill will do is it will consider an apartment or condominium building with a single line, water line or single meter as a commercial building. And then as defined as a commercial building, we've extended our range of sizes from, we had a maximum of one and a half inch prior to this and then a very complicated calculation thereafter. And now we've done, as many other communities have done, we reviewed this at the last meeting. We've extended our chart up to six-inch meters, which should cover everything in the village. So with that, we would just ask you, this is just a cleanup of what you passed two weeks ago.
Questions, comments, concerns? Trustee Mott, is this a justification that you were looking for? With that, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 21-20, amending the regulations concerning water and sewer connection fees in the village and establishing new. Okay, questions or comments? Ms. Clark?
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ms. Porter?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Ms. Paulus Jr.?
Hi.
Where should we end with you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is a resolution amending the solid waste admin fee effective July 1st, 2021. And Ms. Lyons will explain this briefly.
So as you know, we had a reduction in the garbage collection fees or charges to the village with respect to our residential non-senior and senior rates with Flood Brothers. And so therefore, we are recommending a change also in the amount collected from the residents. So my proposed amounts are a reduction to the senior rate of 12.8% and a 9.5% decrease in the non-senior garbage rate collected. This, we do charge a fee in excess of that charged directly by Flood Brothers to cover the printing fees for utility bills. They are, what do I want to say? They're, they're charged one-third of the cost of the printing, the postage and those types of things, as well as an administrative fee that the village collects for that purpose. So that's my recommendation.
Can I ask in the second section, those current resident charges, we got, inclusive of that at your door, is that the waste management?
It is.
Okay.
Yes. Yep.
What's the age for seniors for the garbage?
65 and over if you're a two resident senior home and 60, I believe, or 62, maybe, if it's a single person that's a senior. Does that make sense?
No.
It doesn't really, but that's the way the code's written.
Can I ask, is that a state code or is it a local?
I believe that's in our village code.
Does that make sense at all?
You get two people, it's a garbage lumpers.
What's the age discrepancy between a single person and a?
Senior, senior.
Yeah, can we look at that?
Yeah, we'll take a look at the code. First of all, let's verify that we, that's correct, but Lori, Lori doesn't.
But I'm pretty sure it's right.
And if it's, if it's not, if that is correct, that it's 62 and 65, we'll bring it back for consideration. Now, I will say that that would impact our contract because it would create probably more seniors if we, actually would create less seniors, depending if you want to go down or up. But we'll get back to you with information at the next meet.
What are the numbers we're running with, the numbers on the?
At the bottom?
Or the bottom section?
So the first section is what we are being charged by Flood Brothers.
Okay.
The second section is what the residents are being charged currently and the bottom is the proposed rates to be charged.
With the administrative fee.
Including the administrative fee starting July 1st.
Okay. Is that, so that's why there's an increase because it says a 12.8% decrease.
So it's a decrease between what's currently being charged, so the second set of numbers and the third set of numbers. Yes, it's an upcharge from Flood Brothers' direct charge, but it is a decrease in the current rates.
Okay.
And just to anticipate this question, we do not plan to increase that administrative fee over the five years. So the village's portion will dwindle as a percent, but it'll start out initially at that rate. So as the, as the contract goes up 2% per year, our portion will remain the same.
Is the current administrative fee on the current rates, how much of the 23, 40 in the village is that free to pay?
Oh, I don't have that right in front of me. I can get that if you want to like change the, you know, like go out of order in the.
I'm just wondering if we just carried over when the current rate was as a percentage. Because if we're saying it's to cover one-third of the cost of printing and postage, right, of the utility bills, then I would assume that cost didn't change. So whatever that fee was, we just added to this. So is it safe to say that it's one dollar?
Actually, sorry, trustee Kelly didn't interrupt. It's, it's more than just the printing. I think Lori was just mentioning one thing. We have all our administrative costs and staff costs to maintain the billing system, to bill our residents and then to also pay the bill from, and to cover all the customer service calls we get. So there's a, this is substantial amount of admin costs, staff time to administer the contract.
But all of that would still exist even if we did direct bill to the consumers or to the residents because that exists because of water and sewer. It's all on the same bill, so the billing system, the customer service, the collection, all of that exists whether we bill for trash or Flood Brothers stuff. Now, we have the additional of cutting plus our other check and trying to reconcile that, that's part of it. But that's what I'm just trying to understand, Mike, how are we figuring it's one-third of the cost? Is it, when we were looking at cost, we didn't?
Didn't give any consideration.
Just the printing, yeah.
All we're paying for.
What's that?
Trustee Kelly, I can just say that this is the, this is a 5% administrative fee. It generates about $30,000 a year for the village and that's what Lori recommended and I recommend it to you. So if you prefer a different amount, and I apologize that we don't know at this moment what the current fee is, but that's the amount that Lori thought would make the village whole for the investment that we make.
May I ask how much of the administrative fee goes to paying our employees?
Well, their, their employees are already paid for their time, but it would reimburse the village for some portion of that.
I asked, what is that percentage?
I can't, I can't tell you what their time would be spent on this particular contract, but it's, I mean, administering water bills and, and the, we also collect the two capital improvement fees and then the garbage collection. I do think that the garbage collection, there's a fair amount of administrative work with customer service. We're on the phone with their, with their route managers, relaying customer service calls, especially during a transition now in a new contract. And this first year, there'll be, I mean, just in the last 60 days, we spent a real, a lot of administrative time on this contract. So it's, it's, it's not a matter of necessarily splitting our salaries up among everything that we do. But this is something that we've always charged an administrative fee for refuse collection and this is the amount that we're recommending this year. But if you prefer a different amount, that motion can be made now and it can be amended. But this is 5% of the current billing.
And just my concern is, is it sufficient to cover?
Yes, I think the answer to that question is yes. I can't give you the real math analysis, but Lori and I spoke about it and we discussed what we thought was a reasonable rate that would not substantially increase the substantial decrease that we received with this contract, but that would help the village in a, you know, difficult times anyway financially, that we think this administrative fee is reasonable.
How are you guys feeling? What direction would you like to go? Do you like the silence back or do you guys agree with 5%?
I don't know.
I don't know where it's crossing.
Mayor, I think, I think since that, it seems like we caught the board a little surprised. I thought that this, it has been five years since we brought this up. So why don't you give us two weeks? We'll come back to you. There's no particular rush on this. We'll come back to you with the answer to your question, trustee Kelly.
That's not one of the current agents for me. I also, I guess what, what I want to make sure is what did we communicate out to the community when we talked about the transition? I thought we indicated the Flood Brother to be 19.
I don't, so I was, I share your concerns with that and I, I know that it was communicated that the amount that was going to be charged was less. But I don't know that the exact amounts were, were quoted. Like your senior garbage is going to be $12.97 per month. I don't, I don't believe that that was communicated out.
I think we communicated that it was going to save that amount, $100,000 over the course of the five-year contract.
And I think we also said at the end of the five years, you would be paying less than you would be paying now, the current contract, which would still be true.
Put those numbers out in open session. Or a month ago?
Yeah, but I mean, I just want to add one thing. Those numbers are not changing and they, they should be public. What, what the village pays should be public. But I also think it's appropriate that the, that the administrative fee also at an open session is also public. So I don't think this would be a shock to anybody, but I don't believe the real numbers, the actual numbers were released and saying, this is what you'll pay. But as, as Mayor Reed said, it was representing, it'll be a savings initially, a drop, and after five years, you'll still be paying less than you were today. But I'm more than willing to put some more effort into this in two weeks if you're not comfortable where we are.
I think the biggest issue for me is understanding what that administrative fee is. Does it cover, well, it covers and does it still save our money? So that balance, you can tell that responsibility, so public fund and having, that's my concern, how we can ensure that everybody is getting the benefit of our, going to be dearly, are we, are we legal works? Are we able to bill appropriately without costing the village money and without costing them?
I think the answer to that question is our employees are paid without regard to this administrative fee. Let me make that clear. So they're paid based on the value of their position, the role that they play and the performance they have in that position. And that, all that information was shared to all of you recently, I think, just a few weeks ago. What this is attempting to do is, is cover not just the administrative staff, but my time as well. Lori spends a lot of time on this and, and to make a contribution to the village fund, funding, finances for administering the contract. So that's the purpose. It's, it's not calculated by how many hours a person spends on a particular task. So that's the purpose. It's, it's not calculated by how many hours a person spends on a particular task. Uh, but it was considered to be a thirty thousand dollars out of a three hundred thousand, excuse me, out of a, a six hundred thousand other contracts. We're talking about five percent.
And there, there are also including the utilities, not like to be.
Correct. Correct.
Now, every time we had, now, a tax, it's possible. Probably time and.
Very good question.
I will say that we did a time study, um, gosh, probably about seven or eight years ago, which, you know, doesn't really maybe relate to today. However, we have added additional staff, which means that the, um, amount of work is spread over more people and those types of things. So I still feel like, um, I mean, we're, I could definitely redo a time study to, um, you know, for evaluation, either with this fee or with the next fee as it, you know.
So why don't I entertain a motion to table this? And then give them some time to work on it and address some of the concerns over broad night, and then they can bring it back. What do you guys think? Out here? Or do you, are you guys comfortable moving forward?
I'm comfortable with forward. I mean, it's a dollar, um, for the month, so it's kind of a quarter a week. Um, and it's even less sixty-five cents for the, um, for the seniors and stuff. So I, I mean, it's, it's such a small amount with me. I'm finding it just the way it is. Um, I'm almost concerned about spending a whole lot of staff time, uh, high ranking staff time to then figure that out, and it's going to cost more to do that. So I'm prepared.
Reed, anybody else?
What's need to be done?
Prepared to vote.
I'm prepared to vote.
All right. I will entertain the motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash forty.
No.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a motion to dissolve the Planning and Zoning Committee and the Public and Sa- Public Safety Committee. So that, um, uh, Trustee Robinson will no longer be the single member of his committee. And a, and a simple majority when he speaks to himself.
Shouldn't be any questions. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I want to make it clear that this was Mayor Reed's suggestion, not mine.
Uh, you can say that, but we kind of start worried about that. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve the Planning and Zoning Committee and Public Safety. Question, panel? You have to check for yourself?
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Mr. Carlos, Jamie?
Hi.
Mr. Randy?
Hi.
Hi. Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
What'd you say to the year?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, the next thing we have in the item is just for discussion purposes only. In your packet, you have a, a, um, an agenda supplement dated June first, uh, prepared by Josh Ray. And then beyond that, you have the, a draft of a, a potential water bill relief program. Um, and I just wanted to get a sense of where the board is tonight, uh, so that we can come back to you. Uh, you'll recall two weeks ago, we requested begin shut offs again, and the board was not comfortable with that without providing some financial assistance. Since then, um, uh, we've had several discussions. Uh, Trustee Coder, uh, shared with me some information she'd received from the state, uh, the federal government, actually. Unfortunately, that program is not in effect yet. It may come with the next, um, uh, COVID relief fund, uh, package. Um, actually, I take that back. It was passed, it just, the rules and regulations haven't come out yet, uh, from the Department of Treasury. And that's, doesn't seem to be moving anytime soon either, for that matter. We've, we've searched far and wide, state level, uh, even at the county level, there is no program now that would assist our residents with their water bills financially. Uh, there are programs for both ComEd and for Nigas, uh, states, state mandated programs, uh, but not for local water systems, uh, public or private water system. So with that in mind, uh, we did put together this concept, and, uh, there's a brief agenda supplement describing it. Essentially, first of all, uh, and this is something that, that, that we've been doing, the village has done long before I came here. I think Lori probably initiated this, uh, where we use Lazarus House and St. Vincent, uh, Society, St. Charles Bormao Church. There's a lot of organizations that we will refer people to who help, depending on their circumstances. Uh, some programs fit some people better than others. So that is the first thing that we've done in the past, and that has worked effectively. Uh, but we've also, um, as the board pointed out, there are, we anticipate there may be, we don't know this, we, there may be, uh, residents who don't qualify for those programs who are still struggling. And, uh, so the board asked us to put something together to come up with a concept, and so I would just ask for your input on this. Uh, what this would do is, is, um, offer a forgiveness of fifty percent upfront of the overdue balance, up to five hundred dollars. And then waive the late fees and then work out a payment plan so that the balance would be paid off over five years. Um, and the, the challenge that we will have, and this is always a difficult challenge, Trustee Coth, I think he suggested getting a copy of their, asking for a copy of their tax returns. Unfortunately, those tax returns may not cover the problems that they're facing today. Um, oftentimes those tax returns, uh, if something happened late in the year, it may not be reflected. So we, we will have to find a way to get the financial information or find out from the residents, um, what their, the basis of their need is. So that's something that we really haven't completely identified yet. Um, but, but I wanted to for, provide you something today for discussion purposes, get a feel if this is the direction that you're interested in.
I appreciate that you guys put all this together. Um, I'm much more comfortable moving forward now that we, we have a plan. Something in the plan that I don't see that I think would also be wise to include is, it talks about payment of past balance, but it doesn't, uh, mention remaining current with your current balance. But I think that one's why I think we got there.
That should be required, I agree. Thank you.
And then, um, what does this do for someone who is, say, a renter? Um, let's say the renter decides, say, they don't want to pay, then who's on the hook for the water? Is it the owner, the property owner?
If it came to that, where we had to go to a lien, yes.
Well, if a runner's not paying now, it's up to the landlord to pay, right?
Um, based on our village code, the landlord and tenant are, um, how do, how did I say it exactly? Um, both basically liable for the, for the bill, jointly and severally liable for the bill. If, if you're interested too, I know you ask a little, for a little bit more details without providing names with respect to where we, where we stand. So what I did was I, um, uh, our current, or when I say current, uh, I compared April two thousand twenty to April two thousand twenty-one. Kind of a snapshot in time, and everything changes, you know, every day people are making, uh, payments. So it is a snapshot in time, but what I did was I took, um, what I thought was a representative, representative sample, taking the first ten of thirty pages of accounts receivable. And so let me just give you some summary and, and then you can ask your questions. So, um, of the thirty pages, this represented seven hundred and sixty-two customers, uh, um, both commercial and residential customers that are on our list. Now, some of those bills have been finalized years ago, and we're, we're realizing that we have, um, not really properly addressed our accounts receivable to begin with. And I'll tell you that, um, as far as booking accounts receivable at the end of the year, anybody that's, um, over ninety days does not get included on our list. As it, I believe the collectability of those accounts are, is questionable. So, you know, it's like a reserve for uncollectible amounts. Um, of, of those seven hundred and sixty-two customers, there are nine hundred and forty-eight entries, meaning that there are multiple customers that have multiple entries. Some have way more, you know, some just have a single entry. Um, so the first ten pages was my, um, my sample size, and it included twenty-five customers to review. Um, one that has already paid in full, five that I'll call, for the lack of a better term, frequent flyers. They respond only to door hangers, um, and just don't pay their bill until they, they get the door hanger. Um, two have made, um, payments after, we believe, receiving stimuluses because they were, um, significant payments, um, totaling seven hundred dollars. One was four hundred, the other one was three hundred. Uh, one customer does have a lien on their property. Um, one, in looking at the amounts, I suspect it is a tenant property. I believe the tenant has moved out because there's been no water usage, so it's just garbage and capital improvement fee and our one dollar minimum sewer fee. So again, that's somebody that we should contact the landlord and find out if they have a tenant and stop that bill. And then eight that I believe are really legitimate customers that, um, seem to be struggling. So, um, failure to make payments, several payments, um, and, you know, these are the people that we, we need to contact. So, and I will tell you that, um, last month, I don't know if you noticed, but at the top of your bill, if you're struggling to make, or not maybe struggling wasn't the right terminology. But if you're having trouble paying your utility bill, please contact the village. Um, and one of the people on the list did contact us in April to make a payment arrangement, so.
A resident contacted me yesterday. I directed them to the village hall, and they said that the village, that she, they experienced some hardship during this portion of the year. And she didn't know what to do, so she thought she'd reach out to somebody that, you know, she knew in the community. And I just said, you know, she had first question was like, do we have any grants available or payment relief, I mean, that kind of stuff. And I said, so first of all, we always work on all of our lists, always. We always have and we always will. So, but the first step you need to do is call and try to work that out. So she called and spoke to someone here, and I don't know who she spoke to, but she said that it was very, that they were very accommodating, sent them, uh, information about ComEd's program to help with electricity and that kind of stuff as well. And so she was very, very appreciative of the staff's efforts. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, can somebody with, um, more of a real estate background, myself, as a, as a property owner, is that a minimal risk going into renting your property? That if your tenant just doesn't pay water bills, that you are on the hook for that?
Damage to the apartment, and you can love gold.
Or, or your house?
And Trustee Robinson, we've had, we've had landlords frankly, probably are very upset and frustrated with me personally, and, uh, and they frankly didn't get a lot of sympathy. Um, because it's their responsibility to enforce their lease, not the village's.
Or at this point, they can start the eviction proceedings because I believe the moratorium has been stopped, but it doesn't, it does not affect where they're at right now.
Right, it doesn't clear the path to.
Yes.
Now, I think they're talking about funding to help bail out some of the landlords, the larger landlords, right?
So there, there is a program too. I don't know if you noticed that in Kane County connects, um, if you're a subscriber to that. For renters, and I think the, uh, the application is a joint application, so that the landlord and the tenant apply together. Um, however, I believe that, and, and I spoke to a landlord recently that's upset that we're not shutting people off. Um, and I reminded him of the, uh, the date, which I believe was the seventh of June to make the, the landlord's portion of that application. So that helps with the rent, but I mean, if he gets rent relief, then that also, you know, should maybe help with the, the water bill situation.
So essentially, we have seven or eight people that we think we'll have to deal with, and, uh.
Just in those first ten pages.
Right.
Yes.
How much we actually are owed at this point? I mean, what's the overdue?
Ninety, ninety thousand last month.
So, um, as of April thirtieth, the amount outstanding was ninety thousand dollars. Ninety, yes.
And I think Lori reported two weeks ago that, that, well, a year ago, that number was around thirty thousand.
Yeah.
So the number has definitely gone up. It had gone from thirty thousand to eighty-three, right?
No, I, I'm, I'm just giving round numbers. So, yeah, it's about three times essentially the, the amount.
It, it got to a point where we were, I wouldn't say alarmed, but we felt it was time that the village took some action because we, we do believe that there are some people that could pay that are not paying. Because we're not threatening to shut on it. But as we said the last time, we do want to show compassion and find out those specific cases.
I think this plan does show compassion. I mean, we're, I'm sure we're willing to work with you so you can get current and get out of that hole.
One other thing also, um, the village is, um, changing out some water meters, um, that are older. And, um, we hung door hangers, um, for those people to make appointments to have their water meter changed out. We got some significant payments following that because people thought we were shutting off water. Um, you know, and, and the people that were getting the meter thing may or may not have, you know, been involved in a late payment situation. It was not, um, related to that in any way, shape or form, but those door hangers really were. People do take action, and, you know, if they can't pay, they'll at least call us or they'll come in and try to make a payment arrangement.
So you mentioned that there were a few that only respond to the door.
Yes.
When do you, when do you get the door hanger? Is it after?
So the process is you receive your, your bill and you're given thirty, approximately thirty days to pay your bill. So water bills are due, um, uh, tomorrow. Yep. So then normally what we will do is on Monday, we will, um, we will process all the payments over the weekend that come in the night drop. There will be a boatload of them, and then we will send our late notices to the printer to be printed. So that takes, you know, a couple of days to get in, um, and then residents are given five days, like, five additional days to make their payments. At that point, when they don't pay, we evaluate the list of non-payers and start hanging door hangers. And sometimes the door hanger, um, list can be done in a single day. This time it won't be done in a single day. There will be, you know, multiple days. Um, but we give them five additional days to come in and make arrangements with us before the water is shut off.
And that would, if you get, let's say I get a door hanger, what, about two weeks after the, a month after the?
Uh, it would, yes, so four weeks, five, six weeks, about seven weeks after the bill was issued.
So I get, if I don't pay tomorrow, I would get my door hanger in August, end of July?
No, you will, you will get your door hanger in about ten days after, probably twelve to fifteen days after your, your actual.
Lori's hesitating because there's a long list now and we're not sure how long it's going to take. It's normally, it's normally ten, normally the, normally ten to twelve days.
Okay, and then after you get the door hanger, how long till the water can shut off?
Uh, fi- we give five extra days.
I think what I want to know is, when I get the door hanger, am I on the hook for like charges?
You're on the, you're on the hook. Yep. Yep. Monday morning, you're on the hook for like charges.
But if they, but if they call and we have this program in place, then, uh, but.
Depending on, you know, if they have a valid, if they have valid reasons and, you know, can substantiate that they've had hardships, then this program would kick in.
My purpose for asking it is though, like you mentioned, they only respond to the door hanger. Is there, is there like a habitual offender door hanger penalty that we can, you don't know, can I say it?
So a lot of communities do have, um, penalties even to receive a door hanger, like in Gilbert's, for instance.
Right.
Their account, they get the late fee, and if they don't pay, then they get an additional twenty-five dollars added to their account on top of it, just to hang the door hanger.
Yeah, that's what I'm, because these people are not going to stop getting the door hanger because that's all they respond to. So if you throw in the twenty-five bucks on, maybe you'll think, like, oh, I gotta pay this before I get the hanger.
It's very strange. Um, you and I would, would not want to get the extra late fee, and that's just routine for some people.
We, we do spend, you know, our people have to go out and hang those door hangers.
It'll take days to do that.
About an administrative cost.
We did, so.
That's a huge one. That's a huge one.
I would like to see some sort of beef or getting that, maybe not the first time, okay, you know, it happens, I guess. But if, if it's every two months, you're getting a door hanger, I would like to see some sort of beef with that.
You gotta break this cycle. Well, then, you know, I don't, I don't want to sound like every other person that fits on the board, right? But this is kind of like part of the business and we're gonna, you know, we always talk about how the water department almost operates at loss and all this other stuff. And then you're talking about all the staff time involved, but pretty, like you said, there's a hard process.
Yeah.
And then going out.
The work you put in front of it, yeah.
Absolutely, a certain amount of administration that has to go with this, so.
Well, that's tax there, buddy.
Right. Right, and at the same time, we're working really hard to have a relief program showing compassion at the same time we should be responsible because of that.
Absolutely. Do you guys think, uh, late, or door hanger challenge, if you will? We could survey other communities, find out what they do.
I'm the idea, yeah. I like, um, maybe not the first one, but if you are a habitual.
Well, you obviously have the record of who gets a door hanger, who's had one, so.
It's, it was, it, so when we started this process, I reached out to Linda and Mary, who, um, deal with our customers on a daily basis. And I said, could you send me your five, you know, frequent flyers? And everybody came back with the same list, so we all, we all know who, who they are, so it's, it's really unfortunate.
Door hangers in the past, fine, but we're done with that. Starting today, you get a door hanger, there's your one. You get one next time, twenty-five bucks.
But. Like a different colored door hanger. Okay, you get a red, you get a red one, and then if you ever get a green one, look out. Right. Like if you got, if you got a, you got a red one, like that guy hasn't paid before. That's all the.
If we just keep a record of who has the door. To see if it's a habitual offender. Because it's, it sounds like it's not a matter of them being able to pay the bill. You say they pay the bill, it's time to get the door hanger, so.
There are a certain number just exactly like that.
So why is there not, it'd be associated with getting that door hanger?
Linda, I don't want to cut you off.
They're gonna have to put a number that they're allowed per year before a fine starts.
One.
One, one within, within what, without, how many, without billing type?
There's only six buildings a year.
Linda, how many, how many people do, would you say are habitual door hanger violators? Is it ten or, is it ten or a hundred?
Oh, that's about.
Maybe about twenty-five. But it's the people, they remember they get, oh, door hanger's here, I can't pay the bill. Well, we haven't done that, but there's one woman weeks ago came in and she said, I, I paid my bill, I paid my bill. I wait for the door hanger, I'm okay, and we haven't done door.
I, I, I think there's some people that just don't pay their bills very well. You know, a lot of us grew up when there was not household finance, there were not household finance classes we had to teach ourselves. I hate to say it, but I think some people just wait till the late, endure late fees on every bill they pay.
Oh, springfield, please.
Yeah.
Of the ninety thousand estimated to be passed through, how much of that is commercial and how much is residential?
Uh, the majority of this, um, residential.
Okay, and I just ask of the, the requirement for eligibility of the bill only speak to residential, would there be a chance that a commercial property would be able to apply for this type of a program?
I think at the last meeting, the board was pretty clear, I thought, that they did not want this to apply to commercial. And that would be our recommendation. Yes, yes.
All right, let's say that there's a global pandemic, industry could close their businesses, you know?
When that person walks in village hall and says, I can't pay.
Different situation, right, yeah. We're not gonna go, oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah.
I mean, we, the, the commercial, our commercial customers are pretty conscientious. We, I know about one myself, just because they lost a tenant and, uh, and so they'd called and wanted to make sure it didn't get shut off. They took care of the bill and wanted to make sure their water didn't cut off.
That's actually one of the ones that I said hadn't paid in full.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think there's only a couple of commercial ones on the list, actually.
And then the fifty percent of overdue balance above the five hundred dollars. Does that cover the vast majority of people, like half of what the vast majority of people would owe?
Yes.
The five hundred of it, I mean.
Yes, we only have a few that are in the, uh,
Over a thousand.
Over a thousand.
And that, those numbers, by the way, came right from the ComEd program.
President comes out to work out the plan that getting, you're gonna have a time and a date that they're gonna have their payment.
So.
So I would, you like, going back to door, the door hanger is not gonna be a concern for that one who worked out plans.
So I'll tell you, the administrative time for these payment plans is massive. Um, because we have to, you know, everyone's on a different schedule. I get paid on Thursday, so I'll pay you on Friday or, you know, you know, my check comes in the first of the month and so I, you know, want to pay. So there is a huge amount of staff time spent doing that. And everyone's going to have to be looked at individually because you, you can't say, you, you have to have a weekly plan. So, you know, we're very flexible with our residents and we don't want to shut off their water because water is essential for life, right? So, um, we understand and.
There another way that we could just use the billing system to say, Aaron is on the payment plan, he says he can afford extra fifty dollars to clear the late balance on top of the current charges for that bill. So I'll see a line item of water, sewer, trash, late payment plan, fifty bucks. And it's not, I'm not, I don't get to choose, I'm gonna pay weekly or every third day or twice a month or once a month. It's just another line item that goes if I'm a part of the payment program on the bill so that I see here's my current amount, here's my agreed to payment, but that's.
Um, so unfortunately, our billing system is cumulative. So if your balance is, let's say, five hundred dollars today and your current charges are a hundred dollars, if I add that fifty dollars to your thing, it's not going to subtract from the five hundred, it's going to add to the, you know, whatever your current charges are.
So my bill that I would give would still show the total amount due.
Unless I relieved your bill upfront.
Yeah, and that's what we, that's what we could do. We could adjust the bill upfront before the payment agreement, after it's agreed to, but before they start paying.
And also though, I mean, if you're in dire straits with money, are you going to be able to budget your money each and a half?
You've still gotta stay current with your current water bill.
I know you gotta stay current, but then you gotta go back to the payment plan. Are you gonna be like putting extra money away every week for your payment plan?
True.
When?
No, no.
Probably not.
No, I have one, a guy comes in and pays like twenty-five bucks every week.
No, I, I understand.
Upfront, upfront, credit balance.
Somebody saying, put that on the water, put that on the bill, you only get that every two months. So if I'm struggling, I'm not gonna save that extra twenty-five bucks.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how do we lower administrative.
Yeah, yeah.
So, to, to a question that came up maybe on another session, okay? But if the bill is always gonna be cumulative, so let's say I have a five hundred dollar balance, okay? And then I get on the payment plan and then the next, but let's say I paid, I don't know, fifty bucks for whatever toward it. And then the next month comes and then I get another hundred and fifty dollar water bill. How, 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 how do you stay current if your statement is gonna stay over sixty-two dollars?
Well, I think, I think trustee Kelly made a very good point. We need to look at the system and see what it's capable of. MSI is not the most friendly software. Um, but, but we can definitely redo, and I think we should immediately, we, if we, if we go into agreement like this with an individual, then we should immediately write off half of their bill and their next bill would be, would be, let's say, two fifty instead of five hundred. Uh, that's, that's gonna show on there, but we can also keep it, we, we, we do now, we keep in track, in touch with these people. I think we could probably come up with a system where, where we send them, there won't be that many, um, that have a payment plan. We should be able to assist them, send them a statement once a month, maybe, a, a different type of statement outside of.
Balance out of that on a pass due and carry it on a different ledger to track.
Yeah, we'd have to do that, I think.
Yeah, we'd have to do it manually.
Each, so our system works by codes, right? So water charge, you know, X number of dollars per unit, you know, and the unit is one thousand gallons. Um, so if I were to set up a payment plan for you for fifty dollars and for, uh, for Ms. Palestrini for, sorry, Polistrini, um, for thirty-five dollars, I'd have to have two different codes. So it, that, you know, a, and, and I'd have to go into your system when you're done with your payments and turn it off, because once it's in there, it just continues on until I tell it, you're completed with that particular code.
With, with this, with this group, we believe being, some were less than twenty people. This is something we can handle manually. It needs to be well organized, uh, but frankly, that's something Terry's really good at. So I think if we give this to Terry, we can come up, first we'll have to come up with a plan, make it official, bring it back to you for approval. Um, and then this wouldn't kick in until the, the next billing cycle anyway. So we wouldn't be doing any shut offs until the next billing cycle.
So this would be, uh, cleaned up and then brought back in the next board meeting?
Yes. Uh, we just wanted to get some feedback and I think we've gotten good feedback and we'll come back with some, not just the plan, but also administratively, how we'll handle the billing, yeah, internally, right.
So, I mean, how much of a, I mean, yes, compassion and everything else, but how, how much is the village gonna be releasing or forgiving? I mean, are we talking a huge chunk of change is gonna really hurt the village or is it a manageable?
So, um, again, uh, we have not, uh, our billing system is very different. Um, it keeps very good track of your individual amounts. It does not post, however, to our accounting system. We actually manually book the accounts receivable at the end of the year. So we evaluate, you know, this giant list.
That is just bad, that's why we're looking at. You need to hit the budget for a new ERP or new system.
It wouldn't, it, it actually, in this circumstance, I think actually works to our favor.
That wasn't against you, that's.
No, considering this, where we're at right now, I think this works fine. Um, but, um, essentially what I'm saying is, you know, we don't know if the eight people that I identified that really look like they need help, you know, are gonna qualify for the help, first of all. So I don't really know, i- until we evaluate, I just, I mean, I can guess.
Because you know the total amount that is outstanding, ninety thousand, and you kind of know some of the, you know, people, but the figures.
Sure.
I, I, I mean, if you had to ballpark it, you know, the village is gonna lose fifteen thousand dollars. But the village is potentially gonna lose ten thousand dollars because it's a maximum of five hundred, which means the village has to be a thousand to get that max.
Right. So, well, if we extrapolate it, right, I have eight out of my first ten pages. So that would give us, let's say, twenty-five people that would qualify for this plan. And let's say they all qualify. Um, again, we're gonna have to look at them really carefully, um, so.
But you, but they'd have to be, after this whole deal, they have to stay current for like twelve consecutive months.
Well, we will already have forgiven their fifty percent unless they default and then the entire amount is due. And, and, you know, there, there are gonna be those cases that just can't pay, but we, we really do believe it's a very small number. It's amazing how personally you get with, with three thousand, three thousand homes that Linda and Mary know. Most of them still pay in person, a lot of them still pay in person.
The only thing I would ask is that we consider removing the second bullet under program eligibility, which is the household income to more than two hundred, uh, poverty level. For the old, for the purpose of, if I'm a landlord and I want to apply to the program because I have a renter that has brought up a very high bill and I have to report my income, I may not qualify even though my renter may qualify, but I'm the one putting in for it. Because as you said, I'm jointly responsible with the renter.
In that case, don't you think we should be using the renter's income?
You would hope that the renter would, would apply for it, but if the landlord is the one applying for it, they wouldn't do somebody else's income at the application.
You know, my, my personal feeling is that this program, that we should look at landlords like commercial accounts. Um, that it should only be individuals who should be eligible for this. If I'm a landlord and own a lot of property, just because I'm gonna lose four hundred dollars on that property, that doesn't make my business struggling or my personal income struggling.
I'm gonna go, to you guys, how much, what trustee Kelly was saying, my question is how many of our, uh, residents qualify? I mean, they're only costing fifty-three thousand dollars, household income for a family of four. How, I don't qualify, I, I don't know anybody.
Right.
So how are we going to make sure that people naturally afford this and that the village starts recouping some of the money?
Well, I mean, you're asking a lot of really good questions, but I have to say, none of us up here are experts at, at, um, determining what people can afford to pay. Commonwealth Edison, they deal with it all the time, but not during, only during pandemics, otherwise you just get shut off. Um, so this is a very, a very unusual case. It's gonna take a little, I think it's gonna take a lot of compassion and a lot of creativity. Uh, but we just, we're offering some guidelines here today, but we don't have answers for all your questions. This is the first time we've ever dealt with this.
I think what you put together is, they're, they're very good, like outlining the start of a program. I love that we're being compassionate towards people. That, to me, that's what that CARE Act funding was for, is to cover things like this. I know we have other visions of where that money could be used, but to me, that's what, this type of program is exactly what that's.
And some communities did do that.
Right. So I think that that's great. The, uh, the only thing about the, the poverty level one, too, is when we talk about, we're, to your point, we're only doing this because we had an uncontrolled out of somebody's. In other, in any other year outside of the pandemic, it probably wouldn't have been in this or in that dire of a state. The third bullet points really speaks to that. Are you in an uncontrollable or were you in an uncontrollable situation? If your industry closed, if your business closed, you're laid off, those types of things are the result, right? That could have been true when all of that debt was coming up, but their income now, if they got, if, as the state reopened, if the businesses reopened, they may report, am I now, my income is going to be above that poverty level? But it wasn't when I, when I racked up twelve months of past due. So that's, that's one of the, the landlord one I had and then hopeful, but then also thinking through that the, the situation could be rectified right now and maybe I have to make payments to catch up. Probably not catching up on this, right? I probably got Nycor. So, whatever else I have.
I would guess that this point there, you know, they, they let the ones go that, that can't, they, they let them go. Some, some companies have just not been forgiven. And so they, they've let the one, and we've probably been the, the most forgiving for not even doing door hangers at this point.
ComEd and Nycor have, um, shut off their customers that have not entered into arrangements or, um, at this point.
I'd just get some of the leadership, at least to be careful, because if we're having one-on-one discussions with people and this is very personal stuff, but at the same time, someone else can say, well, I'm gonna say predicament is that when you treated them differently.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I expressed that the last time. I think, you know, one thing we could do is we could hire an outside agency that could administer that for us. It would be, give us less control, but it would protect us in that way.
I, I throw it out because, you know, I live for college and we're giving out the care funds to students and we have to treat them all the same and that's what our awe is, and we have to go. And so it's a matter of. And it can get to one hundred fifty dollars. Everyone's treated the same, you know, you've got, you know, children, okay, that gives you another one hundred fifty dollars. So it kind of, so that everyone's treated the same, you know, I got COVID, check off another one. And so you're able to show, this is the maximum amount you can get, this is the thing, so that you can show like sameness. Because that opens you up for loss.
I, I think we're less likely to speak to the two hundred percent of the poverty level. Um, I think we're less likely to use criteria like that and more likely to use what, um, trustee Polistrini's saying, circumstances rather than finances, probably. I like that. That sounds like a quote that trustee Robinson used once, uh, education instead of enforcement. I think we'll use, um, whatever I, if I can remember what I just said.
I think it was that education through enforcement.
What did I just say? Those two words?
So that'll be on the next board meeting agenda, which will be on the.
Circumstances.
Right?
Yes, well, let, let's just say it'll be in plenty of time before the next shut off.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good work.
Circumstances rather than finances, that's what I'm saying. And let me just say, if I could, just apologize for the fact that, um, for our new chairman of the budget committee, we do not expect you to be prepared for the finances tonight, that should be under the, uh, village managers' report. That'll be correct the next time as well. So Lori will cover that when we get down to that point.
All right, so the next thing on our agenda, Mr. Hedges is off the hook, this one, but I'm sure he'll be a part of the conversation.
No comment.
Uh, so we talked briefly under new business last time about the budget process and I asked you guys to, to think about how we should, uh, handle appointments to commissions and committees and that kind of thing where we ask members to publicly step up. Um, and so I, I just wanted to, we don't, again, we're just, I'm afraid of that action tonight, but, um, I was curious if you guys had had any time to think about that. Mr. Hedges come up with some ideas, trustee Kelly come up with some ideas in the past. We've kind of worked through different thoughts, but I was just curious if you guys had any thoughts? We kind of worked through different thoughts, but I was just curious if you guys had any thoughts of how. So I'm thinking that we would announce the vacancy at the, is real important. We say, okay, so coming up next month, there's a opening on the police commission. And then ask the trustees if they knew if they didn't want to. My thought process was with the planning zoning commission was to involve the chair outside committee or commission, because I, I think of a kind of like football team, right? So your coach is going to know your, your people, and you're going to know the type of people that are going to fit the type of game you want to play, for lack of a terminology, right? So by the planning and zoning, I really involved chairman Rock, because my thought was at the beginning was, let's blow the thing up and let's get public, get some, you know, new, new people in that are going to try to fit some of our holes. But then speaking with chairman Rock and speaking with village manager Hedges, it was crucial that we kept a planning and zoning commission in place. We couldn't wait long, right, because there's a lot of development that was happening. And that, and speaking with chairman Rock, a lot of the people that came over from the planning commission were, were new people within the last few years, and he really enjoyed that working relationship. So you, so he had really pushed hard to see a lot of the people that were existing, and then just ended up how, that the working out was that we didn't have people that wanted to serve anyhow. And actually, we had, we only had to beg one person from, and it's exact words, we're out through three years, but that's all you're going to get out of it. So, you know, and with that rotating structure, we're going to start cycling people through any. But I want to get this nailed up because we do have an opening currently, or one that needs to take place on beautification. There's an appointment that's going to happen in the business development commission. There's an appointment that's going to happen. So I want to get the process nailed up because I don't want to go up to somebody that had been serving for a long time. Okay, now, if we go through this process, if it's the chairman's recommendation to, that we, you know, reappoint that person, you know, it's, it's the conversation that I want to have is do we go out to public anyway and see if there's somebody else that could fit? Or because they are serving and have been serving, do they continue to serve? We kind of got into a rut with some of our committees in the past because, I can't speak ill of anybody, but I, the, the, I'll say the zoning board, I mean, the zoning board in particular, the guys have been doing it for so long, you know, they just continue to serve because they felt they're there. But at the same time, we had to build forward the time, and I hope I'm not too. The zoning board could have saved their whole series. And I always give the example of. Marijuana conversation came to the village board or came up, it was legal in the state of Illinois, and we went through the zoning and planning and that kind of thing. The planning commission had like, how long was your meeting? Was it like an hour and a half, hour to forty minutes?
It was two hours, yeah.
Yeah, and that meaningful discussion about what meets the village and different zoning areas and all kinds of different things and the impact and that kind of thing. The zoning board was twenty minutes.
The whole special beyond that, though, the planning commission sent a letter, a background on their vote, those discussion they had, the recommendations, what they thought, and they had presence at the meeting to answer any question. Prior to the combination of the two, I still don't, almost two years I served, never remember a zoning member being present. And maybe obviously, we need to have a term.
No, I, I'm backing up that.
See, we haven't seen many of any people that's in any committee, any board meeting.
Other than Kevin Rock.
Yeah, he does believe more.
And only Bill actually brings his wife sometimes.
So, and, and so my thought process is unless you guys, again, have other thoughts, where we post that we have a vacancy, right? We announced that the board, that the board be previous to when the announce, or when the seat would be up for appointment. And then we post on, you know, our social media and the website and that stuff, like we have an opening. Interested parties should apply. And then my thought would be, the chairman of the committee would have the authority to conduct like interviews and, and that kind of thing, along, I guess, with me as being the village president. And then when it comes to the time where they make a decision, they or we make a decision, a recommendation will come to the board, and, and my thought process would be, if you're getting recommended for appointment, you should show up to the village board. If you don't show up, you're not going to get appointed. I don't even care if it's like reappointment, because there's a lot of new faces here on this board, and I think that it's important that we ask the right question. And so along with the, like, I don't, I didn't like seeing in the past where it says, I'm going to pick on you even though you never served. Lionel Ma is getting a, you know, a, a line of appointment to the police commission. And everybody's like, well, who the heck Lionel Ma? And what value does he bring to the village, you know? And now, it's always hard to get people to serve, right? It's not like we have a line out the door, but I also don't want to exclude people either that may not know.
And it's advertised it.
Right.
I think we should advertise one in advance of the meeting before, like a couple of months before.
So what do you want? Do you want to do ninety days, sixty days? What do you want to do? And just, let's ask, but you can help me with that? You can fix, start it, right?
Ninety days is the best. Yeah, you don't want to go too far in advance.
Yeah, I think forty-five.
But yes, an advance notice more than just between the two weeks of one meeting.
Yeah.
Because like I said, you say there's enough to release, get open, get a finding, which is an annual voting board.
Too long?
If you don't know what it is, and you'd like to serve as an entity, you may want the opportunity to attend a meeting to see what is serving on the board.
Or if you look at the last twelve months of lying stuff, to feel for it.
Okay. So how do you want to handle the appointments then that are up now or need to happen in the next month? Should, you want to do that same sixty days, or do you want to, I mean, the people that are serving now will continue to serve, I think, until their replacements are announced, or maybe they'll say, heck, with this, and then they'll just be down. You know, some people may take it as if, you know, I'm, you know, and the new change of administration doesn't want somebody in, and that's not the case. I just want a fair, equitable. That's why, like, because as an example, somebody, there's a press interest in serving on the beautification committee, right? But that seat's already filled. However, that seat's up for reappointment. I don't want that person that's up for reappointment to feel slighted, but I also don't want to turn away a potential, I don't know. So I want, that's why I feel that it's crucial that they're all kind of involved in the process, so we can come up with a, a process and then stick with it for everybody moving forward, rather than just me being the president saying, I like that person, I'm going to appoint that person.
I do think it's a good idea to open, no matter if the person wishes to, to stay in that position or not. Not because we don't have good people. I think everyone who volunteers and raises their hand to do anything is a great person to do that, right? I think, though, that there's, there's a couple of, one, it gives somebody a way to get involved that, that, that may have interest in doing more within the community, but just don't really know how to get their foot in the door. And to your point, they could bring some, some background or skill or knowledge that could really benefit whatever group that may be. The second thing is it starts to get those people who may have that little light bulb of, I might participate, start getting involved, and maybe one day they want to go for a village trustee position, or they now know how village government runs a little bit better, and they want to do something, you know, different. It gives somebody an opportunity to get involved. As a trustee, we all have to rerun each time. We don't just automatically get renewed. Name a village president, and so I think that it's, to me, it seems fair just to say, hey, we're not saying you're not the right person. We're just saying that for any time, any term is open or coming to an end, everyone is put up for a. That's the horn of the spear. Right, exactly.
Yes, sir.
Out of curiosity, no one's really going to know any commission better than the chairman of that commission, Mr. Hedges and the village president, Mr. Reed. Could that possibly be used as a quorum, per se, to determine to reappoint or to go off the fresh meat?
To answer your question, to answer your question, yes, that absolutely could. But the, the conversation that we're, you know, that's the conversation we're having is, even if, even if, let, let's say Aaron's your guy, right? He's on, and he's on your permission, and he wants to, he's up for reappointment, and you really like working with him, and you think he's the best guy for the job. Does that preclude anybody else from having the opportunity to say, hey, I like that? I'd like to, to take, take a stab at him. So we put, you know, so that's, that's the question. Because right now, where we're sitting is, you know, the way things have operated was is if you were doing the job and had been doing the job for a while, you automatically get reappointed. And so the question is, if even though that we like Aaron, we stack everybody else coming in from the outside and say, okay, at the end of it, if Aaron's your guy, Aaron's your guy, right? Like, if he is, is the cream of the crop and a bris, bris of the top, then great. But if Eric, well, Eric Robinson walks in and he realizes, oh, wow, okay, Aaron's great, but Eric has all the other stuff to offer than what they're supposed to.
I would actually almost approach it from the other direction, as kind of worrying about people that might want to come in. I'd be looking at it more in the negative direction if it was someone that's not passing the bus. And that's why I would approach it from a quorum. I have a concern about this member. I don't think that directly providing is benefit. You know, that term, then I'll go further if we do. Could that be the kind of scenario that maybe it would be just, if the chairman, if Mr. Hedges?
Currently, it was send your resume to the village president, and then the village president would put it on the agenda for approval, if you wanted to do it or not.
So would it be useful to have from each chair of each committee? These are the, the, we didn't, what we're hoping for. We tell them, how would we best do this for the community? Maybe more at the local, right? Maybe somebody working at a university, but, you know, they're packing these things, you know.
Like write a letter as to why you want to be a part of it?
Exactly. How, how can you be the best person for this?
Well, that's what we're trying to set up, just about to get there. You send the resume.
No, and that's why all the, there are these blubberings for so long, because nobody wants to be up.
Well, that's what they do.
I do like, though, that even if, let's say, Mr. Hedges is the chair of the committee, trustee Cope is on the committee, does a fantastic job, the trustee voter, trustee Robinson won't want to be on the committee, and we have a rule that says every position, whether it's current or not, at end of term, will be coked in publicly for interest. So we have three applications. Trustee Cope is still the right person because of the best of the job. The other benefit is we know that trustee voter, trustee Robinson are interested in volunteering. How will we find other things that they can help out with, to say, hey, this decision didn't work out, but we might even be involved. Here are some other opportunities for you to be involved in the village. Kind of gives you a roster of people that are interested in breathing that air.
The, the, I, I understand where you're coming from, chairman Rock, and I think that, like, it makes a lot of sense to me, your thought process. And I'm not saying that you're wrong for your thought process, but what I'm trying to get away from is keeping, keeping things the way that they were, just on the fact that you were there and you were doing a good job. Or you were there and you were doing the job, not necessarily doing, you know, I, I, I'll use the example of, I use the example of Aaron Neal, the time in the commission, right? Let, let's just say that he's serving in the commission, okay? Aaron Neal's got it down, okay? Now, I love this village, and I care so much about it, and I'm pretty decent, you know, knowing what goes on or whatever. But as far as in relation to your, your, I mean, he's an alderman, he's a health director. He sees some of the stuff that you guys go through, and he asks the questions about the infrastructure and stuff that he lives and breathes in, right? If he hadn't been serving on your commission, let's say, and I was, right? And my seat was coming up for appointment, right? I would probably be okay in your book to keep serving, right? But then we miss out on the opportunity of breaking English with Neal. And that's the kind of stuff that I, that, that's kind of where I'm at. It's just kind of see what.
Okay, I see it myself. I'm not too fond of idling. So, you know, if you're idling, you're just kind of, right, alone. I think that's just for a personal perspective. You do have to provide some, and then, again, that's just my personal perspective on something. Like, you have to provide a little extra solid issue. You have to elect or push, think of something, and be dead weight. Okay, I see your perspective on that. Find the right, you're not actually adding value to the hole. You're just staring.
Right, but at that point, let's say, let's say that I'm on your committee, or commission rather, and I, I'm not holding my weight. Your job as a, as a committee chair would be to say, you know what? We have to have this conversation now, because if this guy's not holding his end of the bargain, there's no reason that he should fill his term. And that's when the forum would get together and say, all right, what are our options? How do we get, how do we vote him off? Do we do a vote of confidence? Does the mayor just get rid of the guy or whatever, and then we open it up?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the situation you're talking about is more about how you, somebody's maybe in a position that you're in. If they don't show up, isn't an active member of that committee, and you're not getting, you know, that means. I think that's a different conversation.
In that, in that, in that perspective. Why, when you wait till the end of the term, we realize there's a problem, and it's, you know, consistent, or let's address it.
Yeah, I, I'm burning with this thing to say here is because when I moved to the village here, and I called the village to turn on my water, I had a lovely conversation with them. Go ahead, you were cool and talking to them and a little bit about myself. And I'm like, oh, my God, we've got positions open on the planning and zoning commission, all these like things. And I thought, well, that's great. When I get my boxes unpacked, I will. And I did. Within three weeks of living here, I thought, what a great way to get involved with the village. And I pulled the resume together, and I wrote a letter as to why I qualified. That's why I'm kind of saying this is perfect, and I never heard one before.
We, we, we have, we have a lot of dark holes, deep holes. That stuff gets turned in and never went anywhere for a long time.
And that was, it came down to, we, I was told that there were openings and that they needed to be filled. And I thought, oh, gosh, legal perspective on a committee like that would have been a nice idea. And it was, it was a crisis. I'll just tell you that. And that you were now helping with the new person in this village to fill that spot, even though staff. So I really do like the idea of the transparency of making it on the website, maybe, as well as on social media that is there. I think a resume states a lot about a person and their achievements. And I think a letter or, you know, paraphrasing and question to why we think he should fill his spots. And that at least that you started. I think we have a lot of talent that's on these committees and stuff, and then everybody does a really good job. But people like me, I mean, I ran for a position to get involved in this village and then joined the, you know, concrete as well to get connected in here. And it shouldn't be that hard, you know, to do that. So, you know, if positions are up, I think it should, it's just, I'm throwing all this out. I think sixty days is a long time, especially when the chairman is looking that there's going to be an opening, and since there's some stuff coming up, and we don't want time loads. So sixty days, I think everybody should be told on those committees, your term ends. If you want to be reconsidered, you need to do the same process as everybody else. But I think.
Is it sixty days a long time?
Yeah.
So what do you think, about thirty days?
I mean, I thought, well, you said ninety, and I thought, oh, my God, when I'm going to do this.
What's a reasonable rate?
I, I'd love to see thirty days, but I don't think that's a long. And see, that's why I'm like, I.
We could, but we can always extend it, too. So like, if, if we, if we do, let's say, if we do thirty or forty-five, right? And let's say we don't get a single applicant, we can always extend it.
Yeah. We know it's coming.
It's forty-five days before this end, you know, the term is up.
You have a patient commitment?
So, so here's, here's. Listen, I got it, and then I'll type something else, and like, we, we'll just kind of, we'll just kind of adopt it as a process. I'll bring it back to the board and we can discuss it. So we're going to let the people know sixty days in advance, and then if you. And then you have to apply with a letter of interest, with a resume. And then the chairman and the village president will interview and then we'll present to the village board.
Absolutely.
You feel like a regular job so that you don't get offended? Yeah.
Well, I don't feel that kind of job. Yeah, I would like to, you know, back to trusty, I'll repeat the point that it's offensive when you hear nothing.
Right.
And somebody that is, is, is very interested in contributing to the community, the least we can do is respond and say, thank you for your inputs, you know, we are showing what I'm saying.
And we'd love you to be involved. Maybe there's another thing you can help us with.
There's no getting one up and the application itself.
None in the maintenance department.
You have to run for a position. There's no volunteer. Don't get me wrong.
All right, that, that's all I got. So thank you for, for this committee. Just, then I'll write something up or report to Mr. Hedges.
I don't really feel I have a strong opinion about, I think you all have great ideas. I just don't feel like my input's important on boards of decisions.
Can't or we'll get out of our bulk rate postage thing, right?
See, Kelly, I gave, I gave Mayor Reed some suggestions just on how to post and things like that. So I think it's been covered. Thank you.
Now, village board committee reports, public relations.
And I did reply to both of your emails about next week.
Nothing to report at this time. I'll be back here with a scheduled meeting.
BBC, we have a meeting coming up, but outside of that, nothing to report.
On the night, right here at Bill Collins.
Yeah.
Six thirty?
On the schedule, but we'll check with Chairman Kredokey.
Yeah, an hour before six thirty, because we like to eat dinner with women.
Hey, I see, I think that's a great thing. Not a lot, for real.
All right, so the budget is two items, but this will be a one-time show.
Correct.
All right. So our first account payable is for one oh one thirty-five. And that is for our employees and elected officials. So we're looking for you to ask for a motion, Mr. Reed, with respect to approval of those.
I will entertain a motion to approve one hundred, spending of one hundred and one thirty-five for disbursements of one to four, for how payable. All right, question comment? We'll thank you with a hump and we'll follow up with our second. Take guys one committee away. One, two, three, because it's totally, totally. All right. Next is the accounts payable for June third, the total amount of three, one, three, six, seven, six, nine. We took that over. Was line business questions?
Page one?
Yes.
Page five for flood brother communications is thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yes, so we did some communications with respect, or.
Excellent. Let me handle that. You don't mind? We actually engaged them to help us with that, with the, we engaged A five to help us with the PR to announce the change in the contract.
That's for the PR part of it?
Yes.
Or like the social media and the press release on that?
That and, and other things, posting on Facebook for us and other things that happened during that same time.
The other question?
Page two, mosquito, Clark, the governor of the field has researched sprays or have these? No, do we know when the first scheduled spray is?
I haven't scheduled yet. There really is no hurry for the simple fact is we've had no rain. So you need standing water to catch eggs and there's not a whole lot of that right now. Clark will hold off as long as they can because we get four sprays a year.
Okay.
So when the deluge comes, that's the spray will start.
And this.
Well, I will get it booked up with Dave. They're going to start cleaning out all the sewers. So Clark doesn't treat the sewers.
Yeah.
They have not. So I'll get set up with public works, they can clean and treat them.
What happens if we don't, say we get a year-long drop? What happens if we don't use the four sprays?
We're giving four sprays.
Okay.
They'll just spray Monday and Wednesday and Friday and maybe Sunday.
When it finally rains, huh?
It's going to have to rain sooner or later. And we can't go a whole year with no rain.
In public works, we never pray for rain. Let, let anything good happen. Very good point, or Panama.
It's in two installments. So this is, this pays the entire amount of spraying for the whole year. Yep.
Any other question?
Page ten.
I'm sorry, who was it?
Streetscape signs.
Signs for eleven thousand four hundred dollars.
Those are the signs to be posted with the electronic signs.
I'm still not with it yet.
State Street, with the streetscape?
Oh, you mean the highway, um, instruct, no trucks? That wasn't like.
No, no, no. It, it, they're actually like sign boards that say, I think they mark.
Renting sign boards that says under construction or.
No, to be honest with you, I'm completely blank on this one.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think there's much I don't know about streetscape, but I can't remember any signs right now.
Let's do for eleven.
I knew you were going to have time, but.
Well, we, we have, we have, we have put up, in fact, I wanted to.
So rather than actually renting these signs to mark the, the detours, this is the.
That's what it is. Okay. So this is for, this is for the detour routes as well as the no trucks on State Street, which I do want to mention it under announcements in a few minutes. So yeah, this is all the signage for the, for the detour routes and also no parking signs on Park that were done by the funeral home. So that's all, it's all temporary.
So we're getting one sign at each end of State?
Oh no, there's quite a few more signs in that. We're, and we'll be, we'll be putting up no parking signs. We've already ordered the signs. This is the bill for the signs that just came in and it includes, yeah.
Okay, that helps.
It, it'll, it'll mark the entire detour route, which you've all seen from, from State to Jackson to Park, Rin and back north.
Barricades and night guards.
And as Lori pointed out, we did look into renting, but it was more expensive to rent than to buy them.
Page six, then, just a question and probably the first time I've seen it a couple of times. Illinois Public Risk Fund, there's three separate line items, one, two, and three. And I'm just trying to figure out, so they're all the same amount, different?
It's workers' compensation and we split it equally between administration and the water and sewer departments.
Okay, so that's two, but what's the third?
Uh, water is thirty, sewer is thirty-one, and admin is, or general fund. So that covers admin and police department.
And that's monthly?
It is.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to move accounts payable in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and six, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and nine cents.
Nobody asked. Who's the name of that thing? It was?
One hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and nine cents. Need new business or other announcements?
I do have a few announcements. If you bear with me for a moment. First of all, I wanted to pass along to, if you haven't followed the legislative session that Springfield did adjourn. I recall when we used to go to June thirtieth. Apparently they've changed that up to May thirty-one now. But the, the good news, the one good news that happened for us is there was no damage done to the local government distributed fund. That was a last minute withdrawal from the governor's budget. So there will no be, be no impact. In fact, if some of the corporate tax loopholes are closed, that should increase that fund, which could increase our distribution. So that's good news. And thank you all for your help lobbying our local legislators. Everybody was very active in that. Secondly, we did start today, soft enforcing, if you will, the no, no semis on State Street. I only talked to the chief around one o'clock, so I don't know what happened after one o'clock, but we had several, several not-too-happy truck drivers.
Is there a sign posted now?
Yes, the signs are now posted. They're up. They're at both ends of, of State Street. And just to be clear, the, the state requirement and, and traffic engineering requires that you post them on the street, not a, not as you're approaching the street. Now, we have asked permission and we're asking permission from I dot to put some signs also on seventy-two and, and Allen Road, but that is not required and that's not recommended. It was pointed out by the trucking company that called, that emailed the mayor today that passed along to me. And so I, you know, this has been very well planned out. There are a lot of options and other ways to get to the, to our community. You know, if you're coming from Rockford, as this trucking company does pretty much every day. If they're coming seventy-two from Rockford, that's their choice, I guess. But you can go up Walker Road to hit Allen from the, from the west. Coming from the tollway, you can come down to Allen. If you're coming from the east, you can come, take forty-seven to twenty to Allen. So there's a lot of ways to get to North State Street, to get to the industrial parks. As I explained to this particular trucking company out of Rockford, if they're making deliveries in, in the industrial park, they should be coming in a row. That's the reason row was there. So I just wanted you to be aware that is up. Is there anything you want to add, Brian, to?
We're working through the glitches. There are a lot of people that say that they don't see the signs. We had Dave had to go and put flags on them. So, you know, it's going to be a working program. And we're, we're doing warrants, not being heavy on them.
We hit it from parking.
Pardon?
Yeah. Settle a ticket because we get to keep the parking there.
Yeah, you pull them over and say, oh, you can't park here, right?
It's an interesting concept. I never thought of that. I think it's a matter of, I mean, on, on the first day, the regular people are going to know by tomorrow. The company that comes here every day, they're going to find another way tomorrow. And so I, I think the police department did a good job and, you know, local deliveries are okay. If they really insist on coming off of, of seventy-two to get to the industrial park, technically that's legal. We said as long as you're making a local delivery, but we're really discouraging that. And so, and, and once construction starts at seventy-two, there will, at that intersection, there will be, no trucks will be allowed to come that way at all. I doubt we'll prohibit that during the, during construction. So I just wanted to share with you that we're doing that. You may get some calls, although, and, and I, I, something we did not think of ahead of time, and I'll be starting that tomorrow, is getting ahold of some of our larger companies like WR Meadows that do receive a lot of shipments. I was thinking more about them shipping out. But they have a lot of companies coming in, so they can let their, their logistics people can let their trucking companies know. So that went into effect. The last thing is a little bit more complicated. The Cave approached Mayor Reed and then also myself, and they would like to have a, a street concert on June seventeenth, which is coming up real quickly. They have an opportunity to bring in somebody that's apparently pretty well-known from America's Got Talent.
Did they, did they pick the date?
They have confirmed that. Yeah, Gina came over today and shared with me her plan. And I have not shared it with Brian yet. Just happened this afternoon. So what we'll have is she filled out the application for a, a large gathering. No, it's a Friday night. Did I say the wrong date?
A Friday night would be the eighteenth. I was on Facebook earlier today.
It's a, right, is it the twenty-seventh then?
No, the twenty-fifth is a Friday.
And the, the update is the upcoming.
Yeah, it's.
It's going to be a Friday night. It's either going to be the eighteen.
I think it's, I think it's the twenty-fifth. I have to check on that.
Okay.
She filled out her application today. So I just wanted to pass it along to you. I'm, oh, I, I brought it with me. No, it's going to be ten dollars for admission. So we'll be completely secured off. And what I wanted to make sure I explain to you is she wants, she'll do just like the event that they had at the Basset Hunt Rescue last summer where they closed off Washington at State. That will actually be the rear end of the concert. The stage will be set up on, on Washington facing at, at Maple. So we'll have Maple closed down just, just north of Locks and then State Street closed at Washington. So the only business that's really impacted then is, is the Vintage Hammer, who was, and Christine was very supportive of the last one. And I think she will be as well. I've also asked Gina to talk to, to Mickey at, at the Copper Barrel to make sure that they're on board. They, they sometimes don't like a lot of competition coming in. There'll be four food trucks involved. We have a layout of the, of the entire area. She's expecting five hundred to a thousand people. And they'll start their setup at eleven in the morning. And then, so we'll start to block the streets at eleven in the morning. And then the concert will start. There's a, an early act at, at seven thirty. The main, I've forgotten the exact timing of the acts, but anyway, she is requesting a, an eleven PM, which is one hour extended past the normal noise ordinance. So she's, she's asked for a eleven PM closing time.
Is she going to hire additional with that amount of people, hire additional police?
Yes. In fact, I asked her today about security and the security company that she consulted with recommended that we, that she hire off-duty police officers. And I have not had a chance to talk to Brian yet because she was just over here this afternoon at four o'clock. So there's a lot to be worked out on this, but it's, and let me confirm the date, Friday, June twenty-fifth. Now, this does not require board approval. This is something that you all designated to the village manager back when we talked about food trucks and streets, street parties. So what I intend to do, first of all, I would, I would like to get your, if anybody's strongly opposed to this, I will say that Gina thought it out very well. She brought me a diagram today. In fact, it's a poster size diagram of the entire site. She has a seating area sectioned off for, for families for, for none under twenty-one. Anybody who is twenty-one, there's, there's no free admission or unlimited drinks, but you'll have to wear a wristband if you are twenty-one so that they know that they're in the right area. But the area for families will be backing up to the, the back, backing up to State Street facing the, the bandstand. She, you know, between herself and her neighbors owned the houses right on that block, but this, this, you know, this music, it's rock music. She's calling it Hampshire Rocks, I think is what she'd like to call the night. Her, her real objective, and, and I know the chamber's working on this too. Gina's mentioned it. They're really trying to come up with some events during streetscape while we're under construction to bring people downtown. Now, this is a little before construction, although we had expected to be there soon. It looks like now we're not going to kick off until July because of Springfield's delays. But this is something that, that she does have support from the downtown businesses so far. There's a meeting actually on Tuesday with all the downtown businesses at, at the Copper Barrel that the chambers put together that I plan to attend, and this will be discussed there. So I think there'll be a lot of local support and I, it's, personally, I think it's a pretty good idea. We'll probably deal with some noise complaints and they'll have to have some good crowd control, but it'll all be kept in one place. The next step I want to do is talk to Trevor about the number of people permitted. I, I don't know for sure if he has a fire ordinance for outdoors, but we want to make sure that we're staying with, we don't cram too many people in a space. So she knows that she'll have a limited number and at that point she'll have to turn people away if it turns into larger than that. So you never know about these things. Two hundred people could show up or a thousand people could show up.
And, yeah, I'm, if, if she does not have the right staff. And, yeah, I'm, if, if she does not have the right, uh, staff hired for protection and crowd control, I'm one hundred percent against it.
But.
You put a thousand people, four hundred or five hundred of them drunk in this town, and guess what? It's gonna be on you. Totally on you. And a copper barrel is all in because it's gonna affect Jimmy's. They have bar bands, uh, those bars down there have bands. If they're okay with it, because their business will go zip on, on Friday night if, if they, if they have those. But if she don't have the right protection for five hundred to a thousand people, it's doing me a lot of damage.
I'm also concerned about the residents in that general area. They, they need to know about this well beforehand, because there's gonna be some people who, they have, as you said, they're gonna get some noise complaints.
Yep.
There's gonna be people that live there that did not expect a thousand people at a rock concert outside their front door or down the block.
And if it's somebody well-known, they're, they're gonna have a following.
Well, that's where she's gotten her numbers from. Uh, there was actually, there were actually two people in this act that performed on the show, and when they perform together, they do draw a lot of people, but just the one person that himself apparently does not. Yeah.
I have a question about one person, uh, drunk driving. That's a concern for me. So will it probably be that in the top, in case we need more assistance?
It would be something, if, if we requested it at the time, they're always, uh, we, we always have a assist each other policy, but to hire back, that would be something that I have to look into.
I know there was a, a concert at, um, an establishment in Gilbert last Friday night, and unfortunately had a problem with somebody who was propelling, uh, moving back and forth and.
Right.
You know, so it, it is a concern because people overestimate their ability to drive.
Right.
After these events, it's actually not the problem there.
Well, now that you, you, you get one DUI arrest and it takes two officers, two hours to deal with it. So it takes two cops on the street. So it's, logistically, there's a lot to play into.
Guys, where are they gonna park? I mean, estimating a thousand people, maybe five hundred cars, maybe six hundred cars, where will they park?
We're gonna have to look into that. Before, thi- this just happened at three o'clock today in fairness. Um, so I'm just, I'm just sharing with you because I, I want all to see you once on the seventeenth before this happens again. So, uh, well, I'm gonna do our due diligence. I'll get Brian involved and, and we'll, uh, we'll definitely lay down some conditions if we think it's, think it's feasible.
Mr. Ed, you're just with FYI. She did contact us also asking if she could use our snow funds for the surrounding boundaries, which I, I haven't seen them after.
Okay. You, you deal with this sort, you have concerts during Coon Creek, right? I've never been there yet, but.
We advanced it all night, all weekend, yes.
Yeah. And how late do, how late does Coon Creek go?
Midnight.
Midnight, okay.
We do get complaints.
Yeah, but it's always been.
Four days in a row too.
It's always been midnight, even when it was.
It's, it's Friday and Saturday at midnight. Ten o'clock on Thursday and five o'clock on Sunday.
That's also outside of town, not.
Yeah.
They did complain with the, with the music out there.
Right.
You can hear Coon Creek from my back here.
Yeah.
Anytime the sound runs.
My robe, I could, I could hear it from Bruce's dream. I know you just do it with concrete, you hope the band was there.
Right.
Just it's a little different when the band is a hundred feet from homes, right?
It's congested area we call it.
Yeah.
And four food trucks. They're not small. I like to get more events in Hampshire.
These two is a bunch, right?
Yeah. We'll, we'll look at it really hard, and if it, if we think it's tipping the wrong way, we'll just put the kibosh on it.
It seems like a really good idea for when that streetscape is done and you have that, what is it called, festival block or celebration square, whatever you call it.
Festival block is.
Festival block, okay.
Maybe this can be our preliminary thing, and don't forget to come back.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, everybody complaining about the streetscape. Now you remember what happened on Maple and Washington? It's gonna be so much better on State Street.
Well, if I can't make both chiefs happy, we won't go forward. And I haven't seen Brian smile since this came up yet. Then again, he just got done with all those truckers this afternoon.
Yeah.
He's had a pretty good day.
Yeah.
Good day. And he gets to deal with me tomorrow in Hank.
That's right.
Um.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Yeah, I had one more thing, not really much more to do business. Um, and it just popped into my head on Monday, Memorial Day, when we were trying to figure out what kind of parade was going by. So I looked on the village website, there's nothing there, but I think going forward in the future, when we have, um, V, the, but VFW had an event, or Coon Creek had something coming up, or the chamber has something, we can all use that, that village website calendar, like whoever the organization is that is posting events, like actually the VFW was in charge of the parade. They could just call that into little tall and say, hey, can we get this on the calendar for this day for residents of one and O, which is I saw like four different times posted for the parade. Somebody was saying.
Maybe, uh, calendar.
We have a calendar on our page. We should utilize that for.
Trustee Robbins, so we don't have any staff that are capable of posting right now. So right now, the mayor is the only one who can post on that calendar.
Because she's on vacation. She's on vacation at Josh's.
No, and I didn't mean like an immediate.
No, no, like a weekly calendar.
Or, or, um, what Chamber of Commerce is doing, doesn't it give, you know, we get it on the calendar.
Calendar, oh, yeah. Our calendar is able to, we can establish logins and that kind of stuff. So even if we could even, we could even establish a login for the chamber, these organizations, and they can put their own stuff on there.
Well, they have their own websites, so they're, they're not gonna.
Yeah. So it's gonna be hard to implore other organizations, but.
Or if you know, find a PR committee.
Yeah, the PR committee's gonna go on that. She was looking for a goal, right? So you've got a goal.
It would be nice to have it all at one place, you know?
I'm all in.
I decided to go to Facebook and I found like four or five different times.
Yeah, go.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean conflicting times?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it would be nice to have it in one spot, like, oh, let's just go to the village website, there's the calendar, Memorial Day, correct, today.
Or even the chamber managing a community calendar on their own, you know, outside of the village. You know, because I'll have chamber cameras run, community calendars, that kind of thing.
Yes, but I think it should be like the village's responsibility. I mean, you got a village event, it could be a.
Well, it wasn't a village event though, but it took place as a village. Seriously.
But, you know, we should be on board with that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not posting. Doesn't matter figuring out how to get it.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
And if they're taking villagers' records, they notify us and coordinate everything and maybe we should do.
Right, no, I'm with you. I'm with you. I guess that's something you can work on. Dave?
On my list.
Dave?
Yep.
Give her the login credentials.
Yeah, I told her she could have Facebook, the website, calendar, she could take it all. I'm trying to back myself out of it.
Don't forget Twitter and Instagram.
So, oh yeah, Twitter and Instagram too.
I'm gonna hire it.
That's who's been doing it all this time.
I don't have any money.
All right. So does anybody else have anything?
I have. Uh, one for A five, they've been doing great work for us. Something to consider for next year, because I know we don't have a marketing position here, and a lot of it has landed on Cousin Reed or on Josh and, you know, that doesn't include the PR announcements and the, and the more in-depth promotions. It may be worth looking at an annual retainer of A five that would cover those type of regular options, I think, because they, they seem to be doing a really good job for the village.
By the way, they just signed a ninety-five thousand dollar contract with Carpenter'sville to do just what they've done for us for about a third of that.
Yeah. So just something that maybe think of in the next year's budget, if we're the board are looking at finance, we'll tell them we are, the staff stuff, when staff officials, we're having a partnership with somebody like A five for the game on a retainer could be a good thing.
Mayor Reed and I talked about that just recently. Good idea.
The, the, the last thing, and I just want to check, make sure I'm not losing my mind. I looked through the email from A five on the project schedule for flood brothers. And here it says that the week of May seventeen, flood brothers sent introductory letter to flood or to residents. I don't ever remember receiving that.
It's, it should be in the mail now. Um, there was some delays. We had to get the mailing list, which took a lot of editing to get it right, because we hadn't done that in five years. But they have everything now, and I think the packet, there was also in a, there was going to, there was going to be, yeah, there was going to be an earlier letter, and working with A five, they, they realized that letter was really redundant with the packet, because the letter was just gonna ask a lot of questions, the packet would then answer. So that first mailing was, was deferred and the pack, the packet will be the first thing. I think it'll, I think it may go out tomorrow. They've had the list now since last Friday, and, uh, I, I did talk to Mike Flood, just, I just exchanged a text message with him today. He said everything's on schedule. Um, and I asked him for an update on the contract, which I expect to see on Tuesday. Um, so yeah, I think we're, we're, that first letter just was, it was A five's advice not to do the first letter because it just posed a lot of questions.
Yeah, absolutely understood. I just, I also saw that we're about two weeks from starting to be dropped off.
Yep. Yeah, we do need to, we need to get moving.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification. Was it on the agenda?
And by the way, you may have noticed the fact I assume the movie's going on right now. Um, there was a bit of an oversight, um, by all of us collectively in the community, and we forgot to get the porta potties. So I called Mike yesterday at four o'clock, and he had them out there at six o'clock this morning. So they, and those, those were donated. Yeah, they were donated.
They were out there, but they were out there last night.
Were they really?
Yeah, they were out there.
He said he would have them out there by six A M. So very, very responsive and no charge for them.
I just wanted to make sure, I think I haven't seen anything common or.
Yeah.
Big quotes. It'll be a stressful time for us.
There's a, yeah, for all.
One last thing, and then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I am not going to be here for our next meeting. I just got the jobs on going on vacation. So, uh, honestly, we had, uh.
Golfing?
No, definitely not. Uh, yeah. Have you ever seen me? Toby saw me golf. We got an award, how bad we. Worst of the day. I'm not doing documents in both. So, um, that, this was something that was planned, and it was kind of one of these things that I was like, well, I might not win anyway. So, I mean, like, you know. So anyway, I asked trustee Coates if he would mind serving as president of the whole town. But you would have to, but your base are gonna have to do is you're gonna have to vote him in. So somebody's gonna have to nominate him or nominate whoever, but it's my thought that our tradition has always been, let's put it this way, that it's always been the longest-serving trustee. And so trustee Coates is it. So, um, um, again, if he doesn't want to serve, he said he would, but if he changes his mind, or if he mistakes in somebody else, it'd be better than that. So Coop would be better at it than Toby does.
I don't know.
I think we should tear it down also.
So anyway, so, uh.
If you have any extra agenda items for that week, feel free to let me know.
Remember, I run meetings for plenty of years.
I know.
No, you nominate him at the, the next meeting. But, but what I, the reason I'm, I'm bringing the board up to speed on this is because it's my intention, as the agenda's being put together, that Mr. Ed just worked with trustee Coates and myself, so that he can be prepared here for the meeting. So. So anyway, I didn't want, I didn't want anybody to be off guard when I'm not here and then say, no, that Toby was prepared for a position that he has to get nominated for by statute. Yeah. Yeah.
Now we're fishing.
It's cool. Um, I know we are, are we, you know, putting the water discussion on for next time?
I was not intending to do that. I, I don't see a big rush, since we have another two months before it comes up again.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, yeah. There's some things that, that are really important to Mayor Reed, so I think we'll hold those for him.
That's all I got.
I had one thing is, um, we had talked, I guess, at the grand opening for Christina Shell Salon, um, it was, uh, trustee Florida, myself and our George Clark about a historical committee for, I want not, not necessarily just historical society. Um, but I think from the conversation that there's so much history up in this building about the village itself, that I think it might be a nice idea to maybe create, think about the idea, some kind of an historical, you know, committee or something that might be able to feature different parts of the community that would get people talking and asking questions and.
We have the historical society right now that, it's not part of the village, it's not part of the village, but, uh, there is a historical society. I don't know whatever happened with them with COVID. I do know that there are several members, and they're, they, they do have storage space upstairs with a lot of Hampshire-type artifacts. So, um, I mean, maybe it's a matter of, I don't know, coming up maybe PR, right?
May, may I, Mayor Reed, it just happens to be timely. Um, I received a call about a week ago, um, from that gentleman's great-great-granddaughter. Um, she grew up in Des Plaines, uh, but she senses just recently moved to Sun City. And she heard, she is, is just now learning about Hampshire, and she contacted me through Suzie Copaz from our B D C. She's, she works with Suzie. Um, and she had came down today. We met just today at, at one o'clock, and she's really interested. She spent about an hour upstairs. If you haven't been up there, have you been up there?
No, I haven't talked about it.
Um, you have to really be into it to enjoy that up there, because it's just a lot of maps and papers, but.
No, we, we talked about it.
And there are some prom dresses that we quite, haven't quite figured out yet, several prom dresses up there. But anyway, she's very interested. Um, the other person is, is Bonnie Engel, uh, who gave the Engel Award out for twenty years, I think. Uh, Bonnie also, Bonnie grew up here. In fact, Panama Street is named after her dad built the Panama Canal. So anyway, I was gonna connect she and, and Bonnie. What I really having trouble doing is finding the, I actually did meet with the entire historical society when Bonnie was here last August. Um, and I think one of our plan commission trustees, the plan is on, is, is on that as well as final. I keep forgetting you're on it.
Yeah.
So, uh, is there a roster? Linda and I can't even find a list of the members.
Because I've asked for years at the library, because this is what I do, is I'm into the logical research and the part of the research, and I have asked for years at the library, and nobody there has ever said, yes, we know.
Yeah, we do have one, but Bonnie set up the meeting because I didn't even have a list of names. So I'm gonna call Bonnie. I'll call Bonnie. But the point is, we do have two really, we have somebody who's really interested and, uh, learning about her. I mean, she found things about her family up there already just today, and the other side of her family is the Walgreen family. So she has quite a history. So, uh, if the two of you are interested, I think we can put something together pretty quickly.
I think it's important, but I don't, but I don't, here's my thing as far as like creating a separate committee for it, as of right now, let's figure out what the historical society's role is and what their intentions are.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the way I've always looked at it is like, hey, we're, we're the president of people, so we should have a committee and do well, right? But if they've already got this going, then we could remain an active part of it. I mean, they've already got their stuff upstairs.
We could do things like help owners of historical buildings, give historical collections.
Right. Right. But my, like I said, my, my thought process would always with, uh, maybe with this presentation, because they didn't.
This wouldn't be like a permanent, it'd kind of be like an ad hoc type of, like there's a need in the community, let's talk about it type of thing, bring people together. Because I do think, I mean, if there's, you know, somebody that will speak at, you know, I would come to the village, listen to someone talk about something, bring some artifacts, and when you bring up something historical on Facebook, on any of the social media pages, people get all excited. My grandmother this and my parents, and, and so there's a need, I think, for it, but I mean, that, but definitely not a standing committee, but I just think maybe we could.
Absolutely.
If we could just fire up the historical society, I think that'd be the right place to do it. So let, let me find out who the leadership is and I'll get in touch with both of you.
We were talking about a field trip to go up there after signing waivers, I guess.
Yeah.
But just to be able to look at some of it.
Sure.